I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr.?
Please bow your heads and join me for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you all.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to our weekly workshop. Our next public workshop will be next Tuesday, ten thirty a.m., September twenty fourth in this room. Our next regular meeting will also be in this room on Wednesday, September twenty fifth at ten thirty. Uh, thing of note is next Wednesday, after our commissioners meeting, we will have a transit board special meeting uh, with the commissioners starting at one o'clock in this room. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Here.
Ms. Frenchco? Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated September tenth, twenty twenty four, and the regular meeting dated September eleventh, twenty twenty four. An accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number three is to transfer monies.
Motion approved.
Second motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number five is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. No, Ms. French could join the meeting ten thirty two?
Item number six is to concur that Baker Dublucar, attorneys at law, may undertake the concurrent representations of Vernon Township and the county commissioners in the road improvement contractual matters and thus waive any objection to the conflict of interest with respect to such concurrent representations and to execute this waiver.
Um, you have to go back. That's that is procedural. She had-
Join the meeting and later time we announced when you joined the meeting, she took you as president.
She was calling the roll, but she omitted to call my name, so she needs to do that.
She did call your name earlier and you weren't here.
No, on the the one for the appropriations or for the transfers.
We're good.
No, actually.
Yeah, I read item number six.
No, you have to go-
The president announced your presence of joining the meeting at the time you joined the meeting and she recorded it.
Yes, but she didn't. Okay. Right. She didn't. She didn't call my name. Okay.
Number six?
Yes. You want me to read again? You want me to read that again?
Yes, please.
That's fine. Go ahead. I I don't even know where we left off.
Is to concur that Baker Dublucar, attorneys at law, may undertake the concurrent representations of Vernon Township and the county commissioners in the road improvement contractual matters and thus waive any objection to the conflict of interest with respect to such concurrent representations and to execute this waiver.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number seven, based upon the substance of Trumbull County Assisting Prosecuting Attorney Jason Toth's September ninth, twenty twenty four, letter to the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners gives its informed consent to the Trumbull County Prosecutor's Office, including Mr. Toth, to represent multiple clients, including Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County Engineer Randy Smith, in the review of an R.C. five five three five point zero eight agreement to penetrate, patch, and chip seal on Vernon Township roads drafted by Tanya Rogers Esquire on behalf of Vernon Township.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eight is to approve the personnel action promoting Mr. Dmitri Leogus from his current position of administrative assistant to the position of Workforce Development Board Administrator. Pay range ten, five years, twenty eight ninety one per hour, effective Monday, September twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Uh, discretion. There was, um, I listened to this, to the description of how this came about and the changing of the job description. I wonder if there's a copy of the previous one and then the current one to see if it was, uh, reduced for the education requirement or experience. Because I only got the current one that was advertised, right? Or was there a change in that as well? I, the, you said that the position was changed, so was it advertised? What you sent over to us, was it, was that what was advertised? Okay, so prior to that, what was taken out or changed or added in? Because I-
We discuss this at workshops. We've discussed this for months and you're just learning about it now?
Good morning, Commissioners. Alex Divan-Joncy Bush, Human Resources Director. This information was sent over, I believe, two weeks ago now. If there was any questions you could have asked at that time, the job description, the job requirements, like the bachelor's degree, that did not change. All of those things did not change. What we did was we condensed what was the administrative position into the direct, the administrator's position. So we took the administrative assistant, absorbed those roles, and placed them under the administrators' roles. So it's a one-job, one-person kind of organization here, and we talked about that yesterday. And I provided you more than enough information. And if you had any questions, you could have absolutely emailed me at any time or asked me yesterday. And I would have gladly provided you whatever you were looking for.
The question I have is why didn't you respond to the man who had the MPA and was listed higher as a-
Commissioner, I'm gonna stop you right there.
No, wait, you're not gonna stop me. I'm the commissioner. You're an employee.
I gave you that in the email.
Hang on, who only worked, who never worked one day and-
We're not gonna go here. We're not gonna go here. You're not gonna be able to show off your true colors in front of everyone.
You never worked one day in HR, yet you got that job. There was another employee who was a minority, who was an MPA, who had more experience educationally that was relevant and has also worked in administrative roles in government for different communities. He was a director of a civil service committee. I I saw, I I researched him because whenever you guys don't hire the the one who's most educated and talented, I do my due diligence.
Commissioner, who was that?
Hang on, I do my due diligence to to try to find out a bit more. And so I'm just trying to understand why you didn't provide us with his resume or the top, the top several candidates instead of, because I've seen this before. Whenever you have someone internally, they automatically get promoted. And it doesn't mean, no, no, no. It doesn't mean that they're not good at what they do, but what I have seen and what has happened in the county is situations where someone gets promoted to director or administrator and they have, they don't have the education or talent for that. They kind of plateau and then they end up landing us in in trouble, kind of like our dog warden situation was. So, and kind of like you. So what I-
Trouble have I caused to the county commissioner?
So-
None. I've cleaned up trouble. Thank you.
Okay, so what what I'm saying is, you know, should this person file some type of complaint? I just, I don't think that it's documented that you can say, based on the job description, based on the job description, there's nothing in there that would suggest that he's not, um, doesn't meet those qualifications and do them more highly according to your notes, except for you, or more, better, you know, according to your notes. You, I think you also said that he didn't have, um, you write things just to try to advance the people that you want to be-
That's interesting, because I don't see anything written in what was provided to you. So that sounds like, oh, that's a lie. What do you see written in there, Commissioner?
I can't see from here. It said something about, it said something about, uh, go here. No W I O A experience is what you put. In order to justify, uh, giving the position to the person-
Asking about though, that you said was more qualified, yes or no? Is it?
Because did you also get the attachment that I gave you that he pulled out? He declined the day of the interview. I have that and I provided that to you in an attachment. Commissioners, did you all receive that?
Yeah.
And that's gonna let Mike drop on you.
I I looked into him and I spoke to him and he said that he was interested, so, well, I mean-
Here, let me go get my email. One second.
That's fine. I know who, I know what he said when I spoke to him.
Okay, August twenty sixth. Peter Metaglia, dear Mrs. Divan-Joncy Bush and Ms. Hat, good afternoon. After careful consideration, I am writing to formally withdraw as an applicant for the Trumbull County, County's Workforce Development Board position. I greatly appreciated the employment consideration, which means, Commissioner, that we did call him and set up an interview because we do do our jobs. And the minute that you, I don't know why you continue to berate my department.
That's not the person.
Who are you talking about then, Commissioner? Who are we even talking about? We move on.
Let's call it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, so for the promotion of Mr. Leogus, Mr.-
Last name Spivey?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
You're from Mahoning County. You know who he is. Spivey with an MPA. Um, I'm just gonna say, huh? Spivey was interviewed. Right? I know he was. And he, and he was ranked higher according on on your paper. All I'm saying is he was still in, okay. He was still interested in the position. He's been asking and contacting you and you're not returning his calls as to why he wasn't selected with his, okay.
Ms. Frenchco, your vote?
I mean, you can ask some, Rebecca, I think, was talking to him over in HR. He knows her from the community because he's worked here for so long in many different roles, but you you pick who you pick.
Ms. Frenchco, your vote?
Uh, be- because I think this opens up the county to liability because there's a a person who's more qualified, more educated, who has more experience and is a minority. We have no minority department heads. I just think it's a really, really bad look. So I would say, I would have to say no.
Okay, motion passes and we, the majority of the board picked who we picked.
Okay. Item number nine is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Megan Gregory as a unit support worker with the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, effective Monday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
A motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
I'm gonna abstain because I didn't receive enough information on that. They just-
Item number ten is to accept maintenance bond number three zero one six five three eight nine issued by Western Surety Company for the Trumbull County Planning Commission Roof Replacement Project funded through Trumbull County's local government fiscal recovery American Rescue Plan funds completed by Bokensons, Inc. The contract work awarded to Bokensons, Inc. in twenty twenty three is complete and final payment is being requested. The work is approved by the project manager, David Rue Strollo Architects, Inc. The City of Warren also approved the project based on the twenty-year Carlisle Warranty issued for this project. The two-year maintenance bond for the work completed in the amount of ten percent, thirty-two thousand four sixty-six eighteen of the final project cost, three hundred twenty-four thousand six sixty-one eighty-four, is valid for a period of two years as required by the contract documents commencing May thirty first, twenty twenty four, and ending May thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number, uh, item number eleven. To approve change order number one final for the contract with Freedom Roofing Windows and Siding LLC for the Gerard Multi-Generational Center Jim Roof Replacement Project funded through the PY twenty twenty-three CDBG Community Development Program, Project Four Activity Two, and authorize the President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, Danny Malloy, to sign the change order number one final. The change order is a net reduction of two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, revising the total contract amount to sixty-five thousand eight ninety-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter for TK Excavating and Grading LLC for the Townsend Avenue Storm Drainage Infrastructure Improvements Project funded through the PY twenty twenty-two CDBG Critical Infrastructure Grant Program, Project One, Activity One, and CDBG Revolving Loan Fund.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to authorize the Trumbull County Planning Commission to send notification letters to all of Trumbull County's licensed drain layers announcing that request for price proposal packets for the ARP Countywide Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program will be available at the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Office, eight forty-two Youngstown Kingsville Road in Vienna. Fee of ten dollars will be charged per price proposal packet. Packets include technical specifications for seventeen income-qualified owner-occupant households in four batches. Batch one, seven households in Champion Township. Batch two, five households in Gerard and Vienna Township. Batch three, two households in Mejery and Brookfield Township. And batch four, three households in West Farmington.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item fourteen is to adopt a resolution recognizing the twenty twenty-four Trumbull County Centenarians. National Centenarian Day is observed annually on September twenty-second as a day to celebrate and honor those who have reached the age of one hundred. It is with great pleasure that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners joins the residents of Trumbull County to recognize with respect and admiration the contribution of senior citizens in our community. The longevity of life is a blessing for these individuals and for a community which benefits from knowledge, creativity, and experiences these individuals bring to all. Special note, a presentation of the Centenarian Proclamation will be held September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at Trumbull County Commissioners' regular meeting for any centenarian present and to honor all individuals listed on the proclamation.
Motion approved. Well, second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item fifteen?
Um, wait, are, I would like to make sure that those individuals who are listed here that were sent over are in our actual journal. So I would like to amend the language. I'm making a motion to amend the language of agenda, item fourteen, to include, uh, recognizing them specifically. Dorothy Marie Thompson, Jewel Evelyn Fisher and Helen Prince, Lily Sarah White, Marion Kaufman, Catherine Collins, Mary Infant and Melissa Minor, Virginia Bass, Betty Cook, Miriam Hopkins, Vesta McVeigh, Esther Harriet Schaefer, Teresa Monte Calvo Verbo- Verbaskey, uh, Thomas Brogdon, Norma Gata, Alma Mae Ward Nup, Ruth Lee, Eleanor, Mar, Marachi, Marachi?
Maras.
Maraski, Z is a C H, that's what my name, Marachi, Anna Mezal and Mike Selcone. I just want to make a re- um, motion to do that so that they're formally actually in our journal. Anyone going out many years can see that they were recognized.
It's formally in the minutes, so now that you read it in, and we're gonna be presenting it next week, so.
Great, so, but it's gonna be actually written with the, amending it so that it recognizes them in the journal entry, okay?
I'm fine with that, but it-
Okay, thank you.
We don't need to argue over these types of things.
It's not an argument. I just want to make sure that someone ten years from now or twenty years coming now can go back and see a journal action by looking up their family member's name. I I think that's-
This is like the way it historically has been done.
Okay, I'm just, I made that motion. Mara said he's okay with that, so I think that is a second-
Let's just move it along, yeah.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item fifteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the Public Health Emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. This is for Bloomfield Township and this is for an ambulance. And Commissioners, if you'd look near the bottom, a one-time grant to the Bloomfield Township in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars to be used for the purchase of an ambulance for use by the Bloomfield Township Fire Department.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
When we, we have a couple of these in a row, we'll bring up when we finish the fourth one, then we'll do photograph thing and finish the signatures, all at one time.
And then I, item sixteen is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Bloomfield Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds required to enable the township to purchase a new ambulance and other necessary equipment for use by the Bloomfield Township Fire Department, which is essential to continue the provision of safety services, especially with the increase of the volume of calls since COVID nineteen pandemic. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the township.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item seventeen is a resolution authorizing the expenditure for responding to or mitigating the Public Health Emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And this is for Eagle Joint Fire District, and this is for an ambulance. And near the bottom, a one-time grant to the Eagle Joint Fire District in the amount of one hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to be used for the purchase of an ambulance for use by the Eagle Joint Fire District.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item eighteen is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Eagle Joint Fire District as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds required to enable the Eagle Joint Fire District to purchase a new ambulance and other necessary equipment for use by the Eagle Joint Fire District, which is essential to continue the provision of safety services, especially with the increase of volume of calls since the COVID nineteen pandemic. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to the Eagle Joint Fire District.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item nineteen is authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the Public Health Emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds. And this is for Howland Township, and this is for an ambulance. And near the bottom, this is a one-time grant to the Howland Ta- to Howland Township in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars to be used for the purchase of an ambulance for u- for use by the Howland Township Fire Department.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Howland Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds required to enable the township to purchase a new ambulance and other necessary equipment for use by the Howland Township Fire Department, which is essential to continue the provision of safety services, especially with the increase of the volume of calls since COVID nineteen pandemic. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars to the township.
Motion approved.
Second that.
For Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-one is authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the Public Health Emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, and this is for Southington Township for an ambulance. Next page, this is a one-time grant to the Southington Township in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to be used for the purchase of an ambulance for use by the Southington Township Fire Department.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
For Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-two is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Southington Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds required to enable the township to purchase a new ambulance and other necessary equipment for use by the Southington Township Volunteer Fire Department, which is essential to continue the provision of safety services, especially with the increase of the volume of calls since the COVID nineteen pandemic. And the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to the township.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Do you want to do that presentation now?
Yes. Yep.
Does anyone, I wanna find out if anyone has anything to say?
Well, they're gonna say in the comment section. I already discussed that with them at the beginning. When we're finished these last two, they're gonna come up and do their comments about it.
Well, why don't we finish the last two then so that they can, it could make sense that they comment while they're-
We did, we did finish it. Now we're gonna do the presentation in the comment section. These two items, then we'll-
Okay.
Okay.
Trustees Chief Eagle Joint Fire District?
Okay. Yeah.
Howland Township, please. Thank you. Thanks again. Okay, and we'll finish our last two items. And if you have comments. You'd be more than welcome to come up then. Okay, item number twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is to establish the creation of the Blueprint Phase Two Water Improvements Project Number Two dash W dash nineteen Fund. Known as Fund Number Four fifty-six for use by the Tremble County Sanit- Sanitary Engineers Department. Funds will be used to extend water infrastructure in the Braceville Township Public Water System.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-four is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permit. Requested by the company listed. Dela Quadri Land Maintenance and Landscape Contractors.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-five is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to haul steel coils. Requested by the company listed. And that's two permits for J Road Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Item twenty-six to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Tremble County Commissioners, to execute a letter of support. On behalf of the Board of National Center for Urban Solutions. Application for the Digital Equity Competitive Grant Program. Provided by the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. The organization is committed to collaborating. With NC US Tech to address the digital divide that continues to affect underserved communities. Including low-income households, elderly individuals, veterans, people with disabilities, racial and ethnic minorities, and rural residents.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Uh, we need to walk the walk and not just talk the talk and yes.
Item twenty-seven is to amend Commissioners' Regular Meeting Agenda Item Number Twenty-Five, dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. To approve an agreement by and between. The Tremble County Board of Commissioners, Tremble County Sheriff Paul Monroe, and Operation Underground Railroad, Inc. To purchase a computer voice stress analyzer for the Tremble County Sheriff's Office. In the total amount of seven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. Amendment is necessary to correct the vendor name and address. To NITV Federal Services LLC, one one four hundred Fortune Circle, West Palm Beach, Florida. And the fund number two, um, zero zero one dash zero two zero, fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred, one, five zero five, four one eight.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mister Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mister Malloy?
Yes.
Miss Frenchco?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our regular business for the day. At this time, we will. Take some public comments. Uh, when you come up to the mic, please make sure you identify yourself with your name and where you're from.
Roger Peterson, Bloomfield Township Trustee, on behalf of the residents. I wanted to say thank you. Uh, I know that there has been a large amount of very worthwhile, very important projects that have run through your office that you've awarded money for. And I just wanted to say thank you from us that this, uh, grant will. Continue to allow our volunteers to serve, uh, not just Bloomfield Township, but mutual aid to the rest of the communities. And, uh, I just wanted to say again, thank you because this is not something that we could have ever pulled off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proud to do it.
Hi Commissioners, Rick Hernandez, Hubbard Township Trustee. Chairman of the Board of the Eagle Joint Fire District, Board of Trustees. I just want to thank the Commissioners. Uh, for this gracious, uh, the ARPA monies, yeah. Like the former trustee had said, we know that there's a lot of projects. That you could have funded. This is going to. On the behalf of the residents of the township, the city. And on behalf of the entire district, I want to thank you for the funds that you, uh, made available. And for the fact that it was a bit of a late submission. We really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief Ron Stanis, Eagle Joint Fire District. Um, I can't thank you guys enough. Um, this money, um. Just want to express our gratitude, um. To the Commissioners. Um. And all their contributors. I mean, it's just not. It's a group of people that made this possible. So I'd like to take this time and thank everyone. Uh, it's going to provide a real, a reliable transportation to our community and our, um, mutual aid partners. The funding will allow us to purchase a new ambulance, replacing an older one that requires a lot of maintenance. It's kind of unreliable. So, um. There again, I can't thank you enough. Uh, the funding, uh, the ambulance also it enhances our financial stability moving forward. So. Once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Fire Chief Ray Pace from Howland Township. I just want to echo what the other chiefs had said. I want to formally thank the. Board of Commissioners for approving this ambulance with ARPA funding. Um, for our township. It's not only going to serve Howland Township, but if we, um. We provide mutual aid to many other communities. So it's going to provide an, an excellent service for that. So we, we cannot thank you enough for this. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Bauer, Chief of Southington Fire, uh, thank the board for the ambulance. This will provide our, you know, our township, not only in the neighboring communities for a. Stable ambulance. It's going to replace a fourteen-year-old ambulance. We currently operate off of. You know, Echo Bloomfield that, you know, this wouldn't be possible without this. Grant. So we really appreciate it on behalf of, you know, my department, our trustees and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Reverend John Michael Oliver, Executive Director for the African American Mel Wellness Agency. First want to say thank you for approving our letter of support. This is not just going to, uh, solidify what we stated as we are here as partners for just Mahoney County before. Our residents of Tremble County. We appreciate that with everything that we're applying for. Thank you for your time and approving it.
Jason Tedrow, Hubbard Township Trustee. I just want to take a moment too to thank you guys. I know I personally reached out to Morrow and Nikki. On getting some information on our late submission. We had some bad information coming into this. Thinking that they, we weren't eligible as a fire department because we were a, a fire district. And I appreciate you guys really going out of your way and getting us that information. All we do at the end of the day is support these guys. And I really want to thank Ron. Uh, he's made this transition recently into a full-time fire chief, which is a little bit of a culture shock. And he's really been working hard. I've gotten to see that the last few months, but. At the end of the day, I do greatly appreciate you guys stepping up and getting us that information so we can make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You do it.
Michael Hovis, Bezetta Township Trustee, Chairman of the Board. I'm here to ask for some help from the Commissioners. We're missing eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars from our funds. What can we do? We're not getting any, uh. Any exchange from the Auditor's Office on these funds?
You want to be more. Specific because people are watching and they.
Yeah, so there was eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars that was transferred to a Green Dot Bank. On behalf of Bezetta Township.
Transferred to a what bank?
Green Dot. It's an internet-based bank. And, um. By the Ohio Revised Code, you could, uh. Local government entity is not even permitted. To do banking with an online bank.
Right.
So.
Who did that?
Uh. I'm not, I'm not here to sling mud on this.
I just want to, I, no one has really told me much about it. So I'm happy that you're here to be honest with you.
I mean.
Except for what I've read in the paper is all I know because sometimes they keep things from.
Yeah. So the reason why I'm here is we don't get any exchange between us and the Auditor's Office. I've asked her for who her legal representative is. She refuses to answer.
Their legal representative is the, um, prosecutor's office.
They can't represent her because of the criminal case that's probably, may possibly come out of this.
Oh.
Okay, so there's conflict of interest. I've spoken with Bill Danzo. She has to get her own attorney. We need to have exchange with her.
Auditor actually transferred this money?
Yes.
I saw a statement and they were saying that, I, I also saw was in the news where the president. Or defended her and said that it was just like high-tech schemes, but it honestly just sounded like a phishing thing.
It was, it was a hack and the FBI is investigating. There's pending investigation.
Right now, we, we as Commissioners and as, um, and county employees on a regular basis. We receive phishing scam tests where we're not supposed to even open these links. So I have no idea.
The email came from Bezetta Township.
Either way, either way, we're, we're trained in that and the, and I always hear her say. That being the auditor is like the junk drawer of county government, but it's actually a very important function. Where you're dealing with internet and they oversee all of the internet technology. I don't know if people realize that. And the funds. So it's kind of shocking for me. That that happened the way you just described it because I don't think it's been out in the news. The way you just said it. So thank you for that. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what we can do, but I personally, as a Commissioner, would, hang on, I'm talking.
Okay.
I personally, as a Commissioner, would like to. Find out, um, from our prosecutor's office if there's anything that we can do. To help make this right because. This isn't fair to you.
Well, my residents work hard to pay these taxes.
Excuse me.
And your property values went up. Taxes went up too.
Yeah, let's hear from the auditor. Sounds like she's on the phone. Go ahead.
Uh, first of all, Commissioner Malloy is correct. It's a hack, which makes it more complicated, not a fish. By the way, the employee that answered that and dealt with it has passed every single phishing test. Second, as far as my non-communication, I ceased communication when I received a letter. From the attorney from Bezetta Township that was full of inaccuracies and mischaracterizations. I felt it was best to not communicate until I had legal counsel. I have been working on that. Legal counsel, we've been working on getting that. And the reason the prosecutor cannot. Represent Bo or represent me is not because of the impossible criminal case. But because he represents statutorily both Bezetta Township and me.
That could be both reasons, you know, honestly, we, we don't know because you haven't shared anything with us.
The FBI is investigating. You're the one that goes to serious criminal investigations before they occur.
I would like to have a, a copy of the letter. Who sent the letter to the Auditor's Office? It came from the township?
Terry Potee, a charity attorney, Terry Potee. It characterized as a phishing. As a phishing situation, and it is not.
I would like a copy. I would like a copy of that e- email. I think the public should have a copy of that email.
Certainly, it's fine, but it's, it's, it's full of mischaracterizations and, and fallacies. And it's including calling it a phishing scheme, which it is not. Including.
Do you know that it's an online, is it an, was it really an online bank that it was transferred to?
It's a, it's a licensed bank. It's a, it's an internet bank, but it's a licensed bank that.
You know the revised.
And other, and other large corporations do business with. However.
Is, is the trustee, is the trustee correct in what he said that?
Let's go one at a time.
Trustee correct in saying that the revised code says that you're not supposed to transfer it to, to an online bank as a, as a government? Or is he making that up?
As far as I know, when I read the Ohio Revised Code that, and again, I'm not an attorney. When I read the Ohio Revised Code that was cited in that letter, there is no mention of that. The bank must be a bank that has, that, that has, uh, that's recognized as a bank. And it must be recognized or located within the United States. Both of those are true for this, this bank.
Okay, did you contact her? If it's new, did you contact the prosecutor's office to make sure that this was legitimate because it is something different?
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm not going to get into the details of this because Mister Hovis is planning to sue me. It's not an appropriate spot, or, excuse me, it suits the auditor's office. And it's not an appropriate setting for us to discuss this.
Email letter or me here today.
There's, there's no, there.
We just want our money. Simple as that.
And, and you know what?
We're a victim. We're being victimized further.
You, you were victimized and so were we. And we are going to address this, but I do not have legal counsel at this time. I'm working on getting that. That is a process that has to go through. I am working on that. We, we, we were waiting to, I was getting advice from Mister Danzo as to the process. I've been getting advice from my consultant as to pot potential, uh, attorneys. And we are, we have been contacting those.
Well, Martha, don't you think you should answer my email?
Legal authority to do so. Pardon me?
Don't you think you should have answered my email that I sent you back on September ninth?
Absolutely not, absolutely not, because I didn't have legal counsel. You asked me who my counsel was.
You could have told me that you were seeking counsel.
It's honestly, let me just say that back, back whenever she messed. Back when she messed up on the taxes over in Hubbard, she didn't respond to anyone either. She waited like and waited and waited.
Listen, Miss Frenchco, you know, you've got about a hundred and some days. Just, just be quiet. Um. Mister Hovis. I did not respond. Because I wasn't.
How many days left I have, Martha?
And I did not have it.
I'm going to.
Mister Hovis, you also mischaracterize everything that I said to you.
She's a spoiled little brat. She has the floor.
Martha, Martha, you messed up.
Move some etiquette.
Martha, you messed up.
Show some etiquette and I remind you.
Watch your mouth.
For our under center of the board.
Go, go, all right.
Miss Frenchco, Miss Frenchco, I'm going to be in office when you are on your next five.
Or to lunch, your second lunch. Just go away.
Okay, here you go. You're an ignorant pig, Commissioner Frenchco. You're absolutely an ignorant pig.
Okay.
When you're going to talk to elected officials that way and women.
The way she talked to me.
Person that tries to.
Let's get back on, on track here. Let's get back on track.
Mister Hovis. I felt that it was best to wait until I had legal counsel to speak with you.
Martha, sit down and try to do your job. Well, you shouldn't be on vacation. You should be just sitting down somewhere studying the revised code.
Four years on vacation, Commissioner.
You should be studying right now.
We, we are going to have to be forced to adjourn this meeting because this is completely off the rails. Let's all talk one at a time.
Bye-bye Martha. You messed up. Just admit it instead of being defensive and nasty to everyone who calls you to the carpet.
Okay, there's an open FBI investigation. We get to the facts of it, then she'll be able to talk.
She's accusing the.
That's police chief Mike. You know, there's things you can't talk about.
Well, she's been advised.
I understand that, but she can be. I understand that, but she can be paying these funds out of her.
I understand.
I cannot, I cannot pay funds until I am legally authorized to do so.
And these funds can be paid to Bezetta from her. She has a special fund to pay these funds. And we're, we're sitting out here with eighty thousand dollars on.
I imagine we have to come through.
And Mr. Hovis, Mr. Hovis, Mr. Hovis, I need to hear that from, from an attorney, not from a trustee.
Okay.
And when I hear it from an attorney, I will, I will do it.
Maybe you should have waited for it. Maybe you should have waited to hear from an attorney before you sent eighty thousand dollars out too. You know?
Come on.
Just, if you want, no, no, I snap back, so.
There's a crime that occurred and it occurred under, they are victims and we are victims as the county at the same time.
She is no victim.
It was a hack. Yes, it was. It was a professional hack from a, a professional people that deal with this stuff.
What Gap or GL was.
Don't we get started with the stuff you don't know? You want to start at A and then D? We'll be all day.
I'm just here to ask you guys for help to get our money. We need this money to operate our township.
Mr. Hovis, you know, they're separate election officials and do not.
Be quiet Martha. This is a Board of Commissioners meeting, okay? So I want to make a motion from the floor that we uh, we request from the prosecutor's office right now, if they can allow the eighty thousand, five, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars to be given out of the appropriate fund from the auditor's office.
Appropriate fund would be your paycheck for all the taxpayer dollars you've wasted over four years. That would be the appropriate fund.
Okay, again, I, I have a motion on the floor to, let me.
So, so let me just say one thing. If they've retained legal counsel, our, our auditor needs to retain legal counsel and she doesn't have it. She's not at liberty to talk about an ongoing investigation, especially if there's an FBI investigation. So I think we can do whatever we can to facilitate, but we have to speak to our auditor as to what we can and can't do at this period in time.
What we can.
He hasn't even retained legal counsel.
What we can do is request from the, from our prosecutor's office again. May, I'm, I am making a motion that.
Which fund are we pulling that?
With that we.
Because you don't pull it out of thin air. Which, which department are we pulling that from? Be specific.
That, again, let me finish what I'm saying. I said, make, I want to get a request into the prosecutor's office to identify if it's allowable to give or loan the eighty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars to, back to Bezetta from the appropriate fund that the prosecutor's office identifies. That is my motion.
The, the prosecutor's office will not identify a fund in which the Commissioners have administrative authority over. It just won't.
Okay, that's my motion. I'm sure that they can, that they can help. That's my motion. If it dies for lack of a second, I'm trying to make them whole temporarily so that they don't have an emergency.
I think everybody in this room wants to make them whole. This is, this is no fault of anybody on this board or the auditor.
So let's see, so.
We're working within the law and within the means that we have to address the issue.
So let's.
It's going to get addressed.
So let's see, let's see if we can do that.
Haphazardly do something on this board.
It's not haphazardly because the motion I said has to do with.
We're done.
That the prosecutor's office.
You're not going to sit here and agree. So, but, let's be done with that. That's my opinion on it, and that's what I think we need to do. Martha, I think you need to keep us abreast of this. You need to retain legal counsel.
And that's the second.
And if and when, and I think more.
Call the question.
Or when is appropriate.
Call the question on my motion.
When you get word from legal counsel, we will indeed make this whole.
Call the question.
We have to identify a fund. We have to identify where the funds are coming from.
Right.
This is completely ridiculous. We don't dress.
We can, we can do that by, with the, the motion that I just made. It said to do all those things because we.
You haven't identified a fund.
We know how, so let the prosecutor's office say, yes, you can do it this way. No, you can't do it this way. Let, let them get started on it.
Which fund they're going to pull from.
And, and they can say, well, they, let them respond. I'm asking that we engage our prosecutor's office to help make it township.
Office is already conflicted in this. They, they represent Bezetta Township.
Let's let them.
Us in the auditor.
Let them tell us that. Let's let them.
They've already told us. They've already told the auditor.
I've made that motion.
They are not going to weigh in on this.
Have they, have they waived, have they waived privilege to let us know that? Because, okay. So I.
All right, well, she made, she made a motion. Morrow's discussion, which I think you said very eloquently and professionally, Commissioner. I think that was a great explanation and a great way to move on from this. So we will, we will call the vote on her motion. It didn't die for lack of a second because of discussion. We will take a vote on her motion.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes, and if there's a conflict or something, the prosecutor's office could advise us on that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
No, because there already is a conflict. The prosecutor's office is already, represents all three parties.
Hasn't said that. It, he, let, let the prosecutor's office say that.
Uh, my vote is no also. I said to Commissioner Cannon Lace on this, and I think he explained it very professionally and eloquently. Thank you for that. Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Frank Dillon, Howland Township Trustee. I just want to thank uh the Commissioners for the check. Uh, obviously, you're aware that Howland Township has a very high volume call, EMS calls, number of EMS calls annually, so this will be a great benefit. Also on behalf of our Township Administrator, James Panalone, again, I'd like to thank you all for the, for the check and you'll see the ambulances running up and down the street to justify the need for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to say on behalf of the board, and I think I can say this is something we all agree on. Um, when we got that ARPA money, we knew that the townships were, were, were sorely left out. I mean, a lot of the large cities got their fair share in the county and we made a concerted effort to try to infuse those dollars back into our townships. Uh, and as evidenced by today, what we, what we just did, so uh, we're happy to help, whether it be through safety and uh, safety services, where we're, we're buying ambulances or green space or HVAC systems. Uh, when, when townships have razor-thin budgets, which they do, uh, especially in today's age, uh, it's up to the county to sort of work arm and, arm in arm with them. And I, I'm proud of the board and what we did here today, so thank you.
Time two, that makes eight ambulances, uh, a lift caught that we also got for Johnson, and there's one pending for Bristol that I hope we're able to work with our legal counsel to, to get that to go through. But every, every, again, I, I thank you again too for representing the township, stinking them and spreading this money out as fairly as we can across the county. And I think that's a great use of the funds. That's going to benefit all of our citizens, not just a, a select group in your township. People are going to be in accidents all through the county from outside the area and it provides a good service and it looks good on the whole commi, whole community to do that.
Appreciate that.
Do we have any other issues from the, from the crowd? Are they good at Trumbull County?
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, I don't think I've been to a Wednesday meeting since before the primary election, so it's been a while. Uh, case anybody missed it, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that Ms. Frenchco lost her case against me, the ridiculous case that she brought against me when she dragged me through the mud and continued to do so for almost a year. I beat her in court, twice. I beat her in the initial hearing and then I beat you in the appeal. And I didn't even have a lawyer because your case was so ridiculous. I look forward to seeing you in court again. Only I'll be bringing you to court. And as far as her work, I mean, what, what's going on here? Last week, she came into this meeting late. She was on her phone for almost the entire meeting. Now, if anybody else did that, she'd be losing her mind. Yesterday, she finally came to a workshop, but she came late. And then when she was in that workshop, she was rude and ignorant to the people in the room. And she didn't properly address herself to the meeting, which is amazing because it's something that she criticizes every single week. Every week she criticizes it. But yet she didn't address the meeting properly. Isn't that funny? What a hypocrite. I, I, I don't know. I mean, it seems like January can't come fast enough for this woman to get out of here. I, I, I don't understand. Why, Ms. Frenchco, why can't you come to work on time? Is there a reason? Why didn't you come to work today on time? Is there a reason? Did it have to do with you being on Facebook last night at one-thirty in the morning? Was that it? Did you not get enough sleep? When you were on a public post, making a public comment regarding the clerk of courts race? See, between your comments and the fact that it's a clerk of courts race, which is directly connected to Trumbull County, I think you've opened the door now for me to talk about it. See, Randy Law is running for clerk of courts. Randy Law was thrown out of the Trumbull County Republican Party for mishandling of funds along with other things. If you don't believe me, go back and look at the minutes. I think it was January something, twenty seventeen. Randy Law also is known for not paying his taxes. Still does not pay his taxes. Year after year, he gets away with not paying his taxes for some reason. Yet he goes to all these spaghetti dinners, pancake breakfasts, spends how much money a week? And yet he doesn't pay his taxes and the treasurer's office seems to be letting him get away with it year after year. He also took money from a political PAC that was directly connected to Patriot Water. Do we all remember the nonsense we had with Patriot Water? Randy Law is a joke. And for Ms. Frenchco, Commissioner Frenchco, to be publicly addressing the race and giving out misinformation, which I have a screenshot of. See, that's how I know because somebody sent it to me. So that's how I knew that you made the comment, just in case you're wondering. I won't want you to accuse me of anything. I also noticed that when Ms. Frenchco attended the vigilant thing down at Trumbull Memorial, she walked all the way from her house over to Trumbull Memorial. Isn't that something? But yet out here, she's parking in the handicap spots, taking away handicap spots from the general public who's trying to come in this building. I, I don't understand. I don't understand. When she's here and she's a Commissioner and she's taking away handicap spots from people, that's no good. That's a problem. Thank you.
I, I do want to say something. Anyone who comes to a public meeting, taking notice of when I'm awake, when I'm asleep, when I'm walking, where I'm walking, is stalking.
No, you make a public spectacle of everything you do, Commissioner. I don't agree with that.
I, uh, people are taking, when people are taking photographs of, and, and it wasn't for lack of evidence. It was because it couldn't be proven that when people were taking pictures of my daughter after doctor's appointments and following my family as well, that that's not who it was. There is plenty of evidence, but people do things anonymously at times before I realized that there was an avenue to actually subpoena those things. So moving forward, um, you can do things in a different way where you could actually identify who the anonymous people are. And that's what I will be doing because when people are putting things on my doorstep and coming to my house and watching where I go and who I'm with, um, that's scary for anyone. And um, I just want to publicly state here that I don't want um him to be follow me, contact me, monitoring my whereabouts because it's makes me incredibly uneasy and fearful for my family.
Commissioner, you're a public official for one. So we're held to a different standard with things. For two, you've had a phone in the face and up the ass of every employee in this building at a time, everywhere you go, harassing people with your camera, videotaping everything at festivals, at Greek festivals, at parades, at Italian festivals. You have a camera from across the room watching everybody.
Uh, someone who, okay, like there's.
And then you're going to complain about someone taking a picture of you?
This is a person whose, whose mother was even testifying against him with concerns about his weapons and.
Her testimony was.
His mother talking about him? What about your mother's having a restraining order against you?
That's.
And your sister, yeah. It's public record.
Multiple restraining orders, multiple restraining orders against you, Ms. Frenchco.
Coming to a meeting and taking us to the hallway apologizing for the accident of his daughter.
This is not a.
Yeah, it happened. He came here when I first began, Commissioner.
Insinuating that I'm stalking you because it's not happening. You had no.
Leave me alone.
I don't bother you. I only address you as Commissioner in this public meeting.
Don't follow me.
That's what I do. I'm not following you. I'm not taking pictures of you. I'm not following your kids.
Your preoccupation.
All right, Mr. President, we have to rein it in here.
Occupation with my whereabouts is deeply concerning.
People see your posts publicly. Everybody's a stalker. Looks at your public posts. Is that what you're saying? You've accused anyone of stalking. You've accused Commissioner Malloy of stalking.
Alone.
I will make a motion to adjourn. This is off the, off the rails.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Thank you, Mara. Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you.
I am.